To warm up, it has the internet connection has to fail before it will save. I'll let you know.
Yep.
Did you guys watch basketball game last night?
Ah, how?
I was in.
Oh, my sister has a cellular internet booster thing.
Oh, I had no signal.
Oh, yeah, so I plugged that in and we have a generator.
Was it women's?
Women's Iowa State versus UConn.
Two points. I missed the last.
Iowa State.
They did.
There. Yeah, they're gonna.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Was that final two, that final four?
Final four, so they play on Sunday.
Iowa against South Carolina.
And they're undefeated. They do, it wasn't a good game. Six, seven. Their tallest player.
Is the men's tonight?
The their championship game is on Monday night.
The men's?
Yep, their final four might be tonight.
It might be tonight.
Yeah, their final four.
All seats, Shelley.
President.
Michael. Richard.
Yep.
Kevin.
Here. She's super humble.
She is.
Kevin, any fire department stuff you want to touch on?
No, just a huge shout out to um the entire Fire and EMS Department for all their work during the storm. Um, as of last night about uh, I don't know, maybe five thirty, six o'clock. I talked to Joe when they were up to a hundred and one calls um, just storm related since the first one came out about three thirty AM. Whatever morning it was when it when it all started. Um, so they've been going, the man is doing the best they can and surviving. Um, so kudos to the department.
And to the road and highway department too.
Yeah.
Cause they've been up on every call as well. And there are still trees down, there's still roads blocked, but they're working. They're just moving call to call.
Yeah, just shout out to stay safe on the roads, but with the generators and everything too. Don't need carbon monoxide issues or fire issues or. Play it safe.
It is interesting driving down the road, but you see all these birch trees all bent over and you see these great big trees all snapped on. It's like. You know, Ben, have you guys been down Jim Grant?
Not here.
If you haven't, if you haven't been down Jim Grant towards the five way, you have to. There is a domino effect of three tall pines that all tipped over. So not broke, this this one, two, three, boom, boom, boom.
Wow.
This, I mean, and we're talking, we're talking not small, we're talking the big, the big, big, big pines. Right, right, right before the uh, the guy with all the uh, I forget his name, the guy with all the John Deere tractor.
Oh, yeah.
Right before that building up. So, yep. Just, just, yeah, didn't cut, I mean, it, what, I mean, the people can't get out of their driveway, right? And it did their lines, it didn't do anything else, any other lines that it did there, so. Yep.
It's intense.
It's like dominoes like this.
I don't know if it's worth mentioning, but Monday during the eclipse, it is supposed to be sunny and don't look at the eclipse. It's more damaging to your eyes than looking at a welder. So I know there are special glasses that you can get.
Librarian has. Marcy had them.
She is handing them out, yeah. I will be eclipse chasing up in Greenville.
Alright.
I am. This is history.
There's a coworker.
Ninety-six percent isn't enough?
No, no, I'm right in the line of totality. Three and a half minutes worth of darkness. The birds fall from the sky. I'm just kidding.
Doing a sacrifice at the same time?
No.
You're gonna have boards on the front and back. This is the end?
Enough of that going around. I don't see anybody's laptops today. I don't know why.
Mine's at work.
Mine's at work.
Are you?
I haven't opened it for, since our last meeting.
There's no, no service here anyway, so. This is draft number five. That'll be the last one. I thank you very much for all of you being here today. It wasn't easy. Some of you come from a long distance. I mean, I should do a statement, I'm sure, instead of being dragged down again this morning.
Yeah.
Appreciate you taking in here. So how should we do it? Can we just read down through when we vote, or you wanna go through all of them first that we wanted?
I'm fine to just read.
Okay, signing our referendum number one, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million twenty-four thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars for government expenses for the town office, including elections, assessing agent and select board wages and expenses. All in favor? Five zero. Mike, I wanna bring the speaker over. Shall the town eleven vote to pay the select board fourteen fifteen per hour plus expenses? All in favor? All against? All abstaining? Five abstain. Referendum three, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars for the operation of the animal control officers and expenses? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum four, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate for legal fees, the sum of? There's two options here. Four A, the select board recommends forty thousand. Yes? Five. Option B, four B, the budget committee recommends thirty-five thousand. Select board recommendation on this one is yes? No? Five. No abstain. Referendum five, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate for the contingency fund, the sum of? There's two options. Five A, the select board recommended fifty-eight thousand. Select board recommends yes? Five. Five B, the budget committee recommended thirty thousand. Select board recommends on this one? Yes? No? Five. Referendum six, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars for the combined department budgets of code and land use, which includes code enforcement officer, planning board, appeals board, and conservation commission? Select board recommended yes? Five. Referendum seven, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars for the operation of the parks and rec committee? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum eight, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and three dollars for the operation of the Lebanon transfer station? Select board recommends yes? Five. Shall the town eleven vote to raise, excuse me, referendum nine, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars for the operation of the highway department and to appropriate state DOT, Department of Transportation funds received from the local road assistance program for the maintenance of roads and bridges within the town? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum ten, shall the town eleven vote to pay the road commissioner a salary of forty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars? Select board recommended yes? Five. Referendum eleven, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand to be placed in a paving capital, capital, capital reserve fund for the purpose of road reconstruction and paving of town-owned public roads? Select board recommended five, ah, yes? Five, sorry? Count it before it's passed. Referendum twelve, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand to replace in a capital bridge capital reserve fund for necessary bridge repairs and replacement of town-owned bridges? Select board recommend yes? Five. Referendum thirteen, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars to cover the cost of emergency dispatching for the emergency services department and for radio tower rental? Select board recommend yes? Five. Referendum fourteen, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate for the operation, upkeep, and purchase of equipment and supplies for the Lebanon fire and EMS department, the sum of? And there's two options. Fourteen A, the select board recommends one million forty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars. Select board recommendation, yes? Five. Fourteen B, the budget committee recommends eight hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Select board recommends this article, yes? No? Five. Can I just say that for anybody that's watching, this is so important, especially this particular choice? If you choose a lower number, essentially you're looking to cut services. If you wanna cut services for fire and rescue fire EMS services and reduce the amount of services that this town has, that's what this number will do. They cannot do what they're doing now with this small, with this small number. It's as, it's as plain as simple as that. So if you're looking to cut services, we're not talking about money, cutting services. That's what this lower dollar will do. So make no bones about it. When there's a group in town that want to cut services, I think they actually wanna go back to a volunteer department. Because understand, this is all to the voters. It's your town, you get to choose. But make no mistake about it, this is not necessarily about money, this is about services in this town. The only thing I'll add to that is the eight seventy-one that we got budgeted for this year is not gonna get us through to the end of the year. So we are definitely gonna exceed that. And the, and you're right, cutting services is the only option.
This storm is a perfect example. You know, the guys and gals were out there nonstop, just taking care of everything they needed to take care of. And lives depended on it for the last three days. And cutting services is gonna have a significant impact on a lot of individuals in this town.
Nate, yeah, you know, one thing that really bothers me, some of the response about the fire department. People have been quick to point out ambulance maybe being at Dunkin' Donuts or the long response times. That's really taken out of context. The, does the ambulance go to Dunkin' Donuts? I'm sure they do, but what what's not being reported on is our firefighters going to people's houses and shoveling them out so they can get to the warming shelter. So if they need to go get a coffee after they've been working forty-eight hours, then I'm okay with them going to get a coffee. You know, they're, they've. If you're gonna be critical, I'm just, that's your right, just make sure you got the whole picture. Go and go talk, go talk to them. Find out what they're doing before you criticize.
Referendum fifteen, shall the town eleven vote to appropriate thirty percent of the ambulance billing revenue received by the town Lebanon be placed into emergency vehicle capital reserve fund for purchasing emergency vehicles for the Lebanon fire and EMS department? Select board recommends yes? Five. Sixteen, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of the Martha Sawyer Community Library, the sum of? And there's two options. Sixteen A, the select board recommended twenty-six thousand seven hundred and six dollars. Select board recommends five, ah, yes? Five. Budget committee, sixteen B, the budget committee recommended twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Select board recommends on this question, yes? No? Five.
I'd like to say something to that um, as well. Excuse me. The, the difference between the high number and the low number is the salary for a substitute librarian should Marcy, our town librarian, go on vacation. That money, that substitute has been budgeted for the past couple of years, but wasn't used. And there were reasons why it wasn't used. Covid was one of them. Um, and our librarian needed to take a vacation last year. It was identified that she has a planned vacation this year, and that's why the select board kept that money in for the substitute. The budget committee uh, saw differently, so if, again, this is about services, not a dollar amount. If the lower amount is approved, we will have to close the library when the librarian goes on vacation. If you want the librarian, if you want the library to stay open when Marcy is on vacation this year, then the higher amount would cover for our substitute librarian so that it can stay open.
Referendum seventeen, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand five hundred dollars for general assistance? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum eighteen, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for the restoration, maintenance of cemeteries throughout the town as mandated by main state law thirteen MRSA eleven oh one, which includes a sum of twelve hundred dollars for the Memorial Day ceremony and declaration of veteran graves as mandated by main state law thirty A, MRSA twenty-nine zero one? Select board recommended yes? Five. Referendum nineteen, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand dollars to place in the Salmon Falls Watershed Protection Capital Reserve Fund? This fund to be used for the protection of the Salmon Falls watershed, which includes northeast Milton and Spalding Farm, Pond. Current protection activity is European NIAID eradication efforts. Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum twenty, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to place in the Building Capital Reserve Fund to include upgrades and modifications, as well as large-scale repairs of municipal buildings or grounds totaling ten thousand dollars or more? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum twenty-one, shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-two thousand eighty-four dollars to place in the no-spray contract central main power capital reserve fund? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum twenty-two, shall the town eleven vote to set an interest rate of two point five percent per state law as the rate to be paid back to taxpayers who pay amounts in excess of amounts finally assessed and authorized? Any such interest paid or payments granted to be charged against the annual overlay, which is not to exceed five percent of the total assessment as per state law thirty-six MRSA five oh six dash A? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum twenty-three, shall the town eleven allow the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes prior to the tax commitment and to charge interest on unpaid taxes at the rate of six and a half percent annually and to set the date when taxes are committed for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, which is July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and payable as of October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four or forty-five days from the tax commitment, whichever is later, in April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five? Interest will be collected after October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four and April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five respective to billings due dates for all taxpayers except tax club members whose payments are received in accordance with the terms of the tax club agreement? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum twenty-four, shall the town eleven vote to replace any unexpended funds from the prior year into the unassigned fund balance? Select board recommended yes? I just, I, I don't like to interrupt on these things.
No, no, it's fine.
Again, I just want people to, I, I wanna call this out for people to understand. This is a question that basically says, and everybody in the budget committee knows this. This is a question that says that anything that doesn't get expended, so if a, if a department doesn't spend all their budget, the remaining funds go back into our, basically our savings account, our checking account, whatever you wanna call it. So the official word for that is the unassigned fund balance. But that's, it goes back there, so where else would you want it to go? And I actually asked the budget committee, four people who voted against this, where do you want the money to go? And they didn't know, because they were so hell-bent on voting against anything that they could. That's why they voted no. They do not have a reason. They didn't say, oh, I want the money to go here. They didn't have, they didn't have, so how, people need to understand, these are the people that are sitting on your budget committee. Unfortunately, we were elected, but these are the people that are sitting on your budget committee, that they don't even know what they're voting on. And they're voting no just to say no. So when you look at these ballot questions and you look at the budget committee's vote, understand that if it's a no vote, it's not necessarily because we can't afford it or some other reason. It's probably a no vote because they just don't wanna vote for it. So. Referendum twenty-five, shall the town eleven vote to authorize funding at last year's twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty, twenty-four level for the general government, emergency services, codes and land use, animal control, transfer station, and highway departments, whose new appropriation is not approved by this year's referendum vote? Until such time that any new funding must be authorized before the next tax commitment? Select board recommends yes?
Yeah.
So what, what departments is that leaving out?
G A.
G A, library.
Library.
Okay, I'm asking this for next year, I know it's.
Well, G A library, but it's all the other stuff, all miscellaneous stuff that doesn't.
Right.
Bridge, capital fund.
So, yeah, so we, we can vote, I just wanted to ask, can I have a comment or a question after we vote then?
Yeah. Uh, I think we did, yes? Five, yeah.
Um, so for next year's war, cause I don't wanna interrupt this anymore.
It's no problem.
Should that include some of those other departments, specifically I'm thinking G A? So that if we have a G A case come in before we can do a town meeting to appropriate funds? That we can, how, how else are we gonna cover that G A, for example?
Which, we don't have a choice.
Well, a lot of those were, right, so G A, the state mandates, so, so we don't have to ask the voters to, we can, we get mandated to do it. So even if we run out of money, we still have to do it.
Right.
So that's, you don't have to ask the voters for that because it doesn't matter because of state mandates.
I understand that, you need to vote to pay it back. I understand, but would it be better just to include it in there to begin with?
Well, because this is, I think the.
Very controversial. It's usually very controversial.
Well, and the, and the thing is that it's, I think a lot of things are, are emergency services to keep the government running. It sets up the time, so this is, this happens in June, so you don't tend to get a lot of G A cases. They tend to have it more over the winter, so um, I don't know, I just. One can make a case for everything, but then how do you, how do you limit, right, we're just trying to say it's the essential services? I'm not sure G A is considered essential.
Okay.
To, to the person that asked for it, it is.
Yeah.
But, right.
But again, we, we have to cover it, so.
So, my other question being super picky, and I apologize for not thinking of this before now.
No.
What's an emergency service?
Well, so that's dispatching.
Okay.
That's fire EMS, so that's, that's our emergency. And we did that back, also back when we used to have rescue and fire were separate.
I figure that's where that came from, but they're combined now, so would it be better?
Well, because you have dispatching, so you have to add both.
You have to add both in.
So just emergency services.
Uh, and I, I understand, I guess the reason I'm raising the question is, where is emergency services defined? Maybe it's in state law or something, I don't know, but again, that's for next year, just raising the question now.
No.
I'm sure you're, I'm sure you'll all think of it, you'll think of it for a whole nother year, right, Paul?
You need to know, so, that was a good time to ask. Referendum twenty-six, shall the town eleven vote to appropriate all monies received from the state for snowmobile registrations to Lebanon Trail Riders Club for maintenance of their system or network of snowmobile trails? On the condition that those trails are open in snow season to the public for outdoor recreation purposes at no charge and to authorize municipal officers to enter into an agreement with the club under such terms and conditions as the municipal officers may deem advisable for that purpose? Select board recommends yes? Five. Referendum twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to author. Thirty, no vote. There's no vote on twenty-seven, right?
Ah, you're right.
Or twenty-eight, or twenty-nine.
Read them.
I mean, you can read them if you want, but.
No, no. And you looked down that far. Thirty, to see if the town eleven will vote to appropriate up the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand for the unassigned fund balance to purchase transitional living quarters for the fire department in the form of a single wide manufactured structure. Total sum includes setup costs. Select board recommends yes? Five. Comment?
Yeah, there's the comment on that, I know that this is something that came up last year's August, September. We're bringing it up again because um experience has shown us that the firefighters' living quarters on Merchant Row is adding eight-minute, six to eight-minute response time to get to their equipment on Upper Cross Road at Station One. So we're just making another attempt to get the firefighters and their equipment back together to get those response times um, back down to a more normal expected response time.
And for anybody who hasn't followed it, it's because we can't keep the apparatus at the Merchant Row location in the winter because there's no, there's no facility to heat the trucks which have water and different things like that, so during the cold nights and days, they have to be housed at Station on Upper Cross Road, sorry, my first, sorry, Station One. And I mean, in the summer, they can park them up there to a degree, um, but it's obviously ideal for them to be with their. But it's obviously ideal for them to be with their apparatus a hundred percent of the time.
And, and on the money side of this, we're paying four thousand dollars a month in rent and utilities. To keep them in the, in the house on Merchant's Row, and that's coming out of taxpayer raised funds out of the fire department budget. This question. Is to take the money out of our savings account, as Chip called it earlier. So this would not have a direct impact on taxes in the coming fiscal year. And if you do the math out, four thousand dollars a month. So we'll round it up to fifty thousand dollars a year. We're, we're talking, um, in excess of three years to get to a new station, so. Um, it, this, this, this referendum would actually save the taxpayers money. In, in the long run, in the long term. And, um, I think the next question is. Thirty-eight, is that right, Paul?
Yes, it is.
So what I, I'd like to add too, before we get to question thirty-eight is. The referendum questions that we just went over. Numbers one through thirty. If, if all passed at the higher amounts where there's a split question, if they all passed. Would most likely not raise the mill rate next year on the town's portion. Of how the mill rate is calculated, so that excludes the school and the county tax, we don't have control over that. And those pro, those likely will go up. The school is going through their budget cycle right now, so we don't know the number, but. The budgets as presented in those questions one through thirty, the select board worked very hard to not. Cause an increase in the town's portion of next year's mill rate. At the same time, those higher numbers, as we've talked about already. Would meet, um, our basic needs, our basic services. So I just wanted to point that out. E- even though there's some split questions on there, even those higher amounts. Most likely would not trigger an increase in the town's portion of the mill rate for next year, next fiscal year. The following questions are different, and that's why I wanted to bring that up now. Yes, thank you.
Referendum, yeah, referendum thirty-eight.
Paul Foigal there, is there a recent thirty-seventh not asking for a recommendation?
No funds.
Right, no funds for, so that's budget committee, but why aren't we?
We can.
I know we don't normally do ordinances, but this isn't an ordinance.
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering.
No, I can add it in. The consensus of, consensus of the board is doing.
Or if we don't want to do it, if the board doesn't want to do it, that's fine, I, I don't know.
Yeah. Select Board's action on this, what do you think?
I think it's fine if we do, some of the, one, some of the other town warrants I've seen, the select board gives a recommendation on, on everything. So I don't think there's a restriction that we can't.
No, I know in the past you don't want me to do it on ordinances.
No, yeah.
But this isn't an ordinance, so. And I, I don't. Because we're also changing. The use of these funds. Uh, I'm glad, if I'm correct, that this question says that you cannot use them for any more improvements on the transition. So the use of changes as well.
So, so if, if this passes, then. We have to.
Well, it can only be used for that purpose, it cannot be used, if, if something comes up that we were able to do some, something for recycling, you can't use it now. So. We can't get bins if we need bins or whatever that we want for recycling because we can't, because this is now changing, it's only. Being allowed for, for that use.
Do you want to modify the wording? We still have, we're allowed to do that because we don't have, um, we don't, we don't have any other votes taken, yeah.
It, it might almost, I don't know, I'll listen play out, but, um, I'm thinking of that here. Instead of for the purpose of using unused funds to purchase compact track loader. For the, uh, to have the option to use the funds.
Well, I guess.
That way.
The compact track loader, correct me if I'm wrong, is so that we can do more recycling. Or is it just to do? Because they were talking about being able to move things around.
It's for both purposes, sa- safety and to progress. Bringing back recycling. This, this alone won't bring back recycling, there's other things needed.
And how are we going to pay for those? We don't pay for those, because I mean, that's the. And I don't mean to bring this up now, but I'm not, I, I just, it's. I would like to look at a multi-purpose vehicle perhaps that can be used. Because again, Scott's talking about a loader, but it's smaller, not the big supply that we have now. And I don't know whether there's, whether there. Well, everybody wants their own piece of equipment and I get that, right, but if it's primarily going to be up there. There anyways, why, it would make sense to me to look to see if it really does make sense to have a multi-purpose vehicle that can be used. To, to load stuff around at the transfer station. That has enough reach. So you can get into that other, it doesn't have to necessarily go into it because you don't have to put everything.
Into work.
So into the recycle building?
Okay.
You don't have to necessarily drive through, but you do have garage doors, so if it's, if the right size, you might be able to, if it has reach, it can still get in there. So my point is that you don't have to, you know, but. Does it need to be a tractor, is there another way to have wheels, does it need to be tracked versus wheeled? And does track mean that you can't do that for, you know, loading sand, or, or can you use a truck? Can you use track and both, I don't know, I, I don't. So those are the questions I would love to.
You can use, yeah, you can use tracks on both, but if it's primarily going to be used on pavement, you, you wouldn't want wheels because it'll wear the tracks out a lot faster. Uh, but for some of the applications, if it's dual application. Then if you get wheels, you're, you're limiting some of the other. Uh, work that can be done with it, where only tracks would be appropriate, so.
Right, and, right, and I, and I, and I get we're worried about the metal, but if you've got, if you've got a, a skid steer you're scraping, you shouldn't have a lot of metal that you're, that you drive on. Right, I mean.
And, and the tire, you get tires aren't, aren't pneumatic, you can get hard tires, so you can drive on anything.
Right, so I, I, so. So I mean, that's, that's why my point is, is that I, I, I just, I don't think there's been enough discussion. To see if there's perhaps a way to get a, a vehicle that can be used for both.
I mean, if we just took the word track out of there.
Well, it says for similar piece of equipment.
Oh, yeah, or similar, there you go. So, uh, and we, I've had that conversation with Josh, and maybe I didn't do a good job bringing it to the board. The primary concern with having a piece of equipment shared would be. Um, during the winter, who's going to have priority to use it, right? You can't, you can't have sand trucks coming in and out and eat it over there at the same time you're trying to move, uh.
But that's, but that's my point, you know, if you're in a go of a snowstorm.
Yeah.
Okay, loading sand is certainly a priority, they don't need to move recyclable stuff right then and there, a lot of times that can be scheduled, that's not like.
Um, well, no, not, not necessarily just recycling, no, like they, they don't, they need, they, they need that up there today. They have a, they have a use, to clean snow. To, to be able to get into the, right, so.
But, but you have a plow, they could do, they could use that in between loads.
Right, no, they, they have, they have.
So I, I guess my point is, is that it's. We've gotten this long without one at all, and now all of a sudden now we have, you know, the minute we get one, it can't be used for. All I'm saying is I think there needs to be a bigger discussion about, and I get everybody wants their own. You know, there's always this shared, shared stuff is a, is a tough one, right, because everyone wants their domain. It's my piece of equipment, I get it, but it's just.
I think it's that they want different pieces of equipment.
Well, but that's my point, is, is I don't know. If you, if one wants their own piece of equipment, then you can make the case that, oh, we can only use a skid steer. Because that supports their thing about it can only be theirs. But I don't know whether that's true. I don't know whether, you know, these compact loaders, you know what I'm saying, with all those different attachments, can be just as good and, and to use, be used for a dual purpose.
So, so I think, I think that from what I'm gathering, that the needs that Josh is stating for this compact track loader or similar. Are fairly different than what Scott is requesting with a compact loader. And there may be just some confusion on the terminology, so, um. And, and ju- just clarify that, a compact track loader is like the Bobcat, right? A little thing that everybody knows, it either has wheels or it has tracks. And it's small, you know, one person, boom, it doesn't articulate anything like that, it just skids around. A compact wheel loader is an articulating loader that steers like this, has a bucket on the front, or you can put forks or, you know. Even brooms to do snow or sand, whatever, different things as well, but it's bigger. Um, it, if you envision, you know, the loaders that are loading the sand into the dump trucks and things like that. So there's a pretty significant size difference, although Scott's not asking, you know, for something that you could use in quarries and mines, it's, it's still a compact wheel loader. But it's more nimble, um, it, it has a bigger bucket capacity, it has a higher reach for loading stuff into dump trucks. Um, whereas the compact, either skid steer or track loader, wheels or tracks. Is just small, um, and it's used for pushing, pulling snow, not pulling, but pushing, uh, loading not very high, has about an eighty-one inch. Um, inch mid dump height, uh, and for getting into smaller areas. So both can be used for similar things, but. Scott's request, and I think Scott's requirement that he shared, it's obviously not on, on this ballot or anything. Is for a bigger piece of equipment to do higher, bigger stuff.
Right, and I, and I'm not, I'm not debating that, but what I'm saying is, is can that piece of equipment also. Serve the transfer station, because the transfer station has had, hasn't had any machinery for decades. Decades, I mean, like multi, I mean centuries, I mean, so this now say that we need one and we're going to use it all the time. Doesn't make sense, we're not providing any more services, we're not doing anything more on recyclables, we're not, we don't have bins that we got to move all over the place, I don't see any of that up there right now. So we don't need, so while we may have the use, we could use one for safety, for lifting, because. You know, you know what I'm saying, so there could be some of that, I can see that, which is a forklift. Right, so, you know, but this, this thing has, you can put forks on it, pretty simple.
Okay.
And it has a reach and it has, so can that, could that work dual purpose for them? Right, that's, that's the part I honestly don't know.
I think my, my question is, I agree with the dual purpose, however, in this account, we have what, fifty thousand dollars? Yeah, some fifty or sixty, where's the rest, what Scott wants is essentially like a hundred grand, right?
So that's.
So where's. So where's the rest of that money going to come from? So I guess that's, that's.
That's not this, so my, my point is, is that's not this, okay, and that may be what Scott wants, and that may come down the road, we may put that on another ballot. Whether that be November or something to come, but my point is, is that. Why would we, my, my question is, is that why would we buy this, if we're also looking to buy that for Scott, that might also do this? And so now we just spent money that we really don't, so I mean, the skid steer is going to sit up there unused for the majority of the time. So a few times they're going to need it to use it. Now, can they find more uses for it? Sure they could. Right, I mean, hey, get to drive around the skid steer, that's fun, I'm not, I'm just. I don't see it being used that often. You know, and is everybody have, going to have training, is everybody going to be, so this, this, and I'm just saying is that I think. A dual purpose might work, might not, I'm not convinced that it doesn't work. It may not work, and there may be other reasons, I mean, so I, I, that's, that's. And so the point is, is this wording of this question, while it extends the timeframe, only means we can do one thing. But yet if we were to get a dual purpose vehicle that has that, then, then do we get some recyclable bins that can be moved around with this repurpose that we have to buy? Or do we get those from waste management, I don't, I don't know, but I mean, how do we expand? Recycling without money? I guess is my, because we just tied up, this question would tie up all the, any remaining money. So let's say we could get a skid steer for fifty, and just ten grand, we couldn't touch it. The way this is worded, we couldn't touch it.
You just want to add.
So after, after June twenty twenty-five, can you cross out four and put and? On that, on the question? Yeah, yeah, ha- having the option to go, to use it for whatever, for the transfer station, whether it's recycling or a piece of equipment or whatever, I think is a good idea. And, and then we can assess when we start looking at different recycling options. So there's putting an and there, extend it for modification and improvements, and add for the purpose. Of using unused funds for a compact track loader, does that work?
So how, how this. Uh, create on, uh, eight twenty-one, twenty-one for modification from June to June twenty twenty-five. To include a purpose of a compact track loader or similar piece of equipment, period.
Using, to include.
To include the purpose of a compact track loader or similar piece of equipment, period.
Okay, so that just lumps the purchase of the equipment into under the whole umbrella of the whole thing.
So while one could say it's for, it's for the modifications, improvements. We're making it very clear, we don't want somebody to say, hey, we just bought this, this, a compact or a track loader, and they say, hey, that's not considered an improvement. Right, so we're getting, we're asking for permission to extend it and to allow that to be included.
To include the purchase of a compact track loader or s- or similar piece of equipment, period?
Yeah, period.
And then we can debate the rest of these questions later.
Well, because ultimately, I mean, if it gets extended, I mean, that's my view now, but if I'm not on the board, it comes after June. It really could care, this is a capital reserve account, so it doesn't, doesn't matter.
So we. Since we're modifying this, do we want? To keep an end date on it? Of June twenty twenty-five? Yeah, because if, if we need to put something in the budget. Do you want to add? Purchase the dual. Add two years, or add two years, twenty twenty-six, or just get rid of the end date altogether?
Maybe, maybe you do it to twice, um. No, if we do it to, to, I would do it to July. Twenty-five, not June. So that's the new fiscal year.
Yep.
So that way, in the fall, in June of twenty-five, if you have a, if you have a vote for a piece of highway equipment that will use it, then you're covered. But, so in other words, in four months, we didn't, you guys may decide, we're going to go the route of a dual purpose machine. So we don't need this for that, we can use this for other recyclable stuff. Right, but I'm just. I'll leave you covered because you can put it on the June ballot. The, the following June ballot. If you say June, I don't know, was it June first or is it June thirtieth, it's, so I think it'd be as soon as July, you know what I'm saying? Or July first, you could even put a, a date on that, or June thirtieth. So. I'm, I'm open to.
Do you want me to write that down, Paul?
Yes, when, when you guys finally figure out the actual words, it's like, I've got too many different words, I didn't mark mine because I just, too many changes going in.
I just do June thirtieth, June thirty, twenty-five. Do you have it, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, to include the, yeah. And you could have, I mean, when you do July or just June thirtieth?
Yeah, June thirtieth.
Thing about you, you know, the, the, the transfer station, four days a week, so you can buy a piece of equipment, we'll, we'll set it up for, for three days a week.
Yeah, what, what Scott was talking about, I didn't catch the whole conversation, cause I was on video when I was watching it. He was talk, did he talk about using it for MOLI two? Is that something, he might have told me that separately.
Yeah, I think that would be a separate piece of equipment.
You're saying the front is independent, the steering on the front, this one of those is that?
On which piece?
On the compact ones.
The one that Scott's asking for is an articulated.
Is that what they call that?
Yeah.
That gives you more maneuver.
Maneuver, really. Well, not really, because a, um, a skid steer or compact wheel loader, tracks or wheels can spin around.
But, but more maneuverability than, than a fixed.
Yes, well.
Non-articulated.
Yeah, that would be essentially a compact tractor or full-size tractor. And those have very limited maneuverability.
That's what I mean. So the maneuverability allows you to, he could, he could lift something with his, his force and really put it in and over here, because he's got through the doorway. So you could set it up. Whatever you might be pulling out of there, doesn't happen.
Well, that, that's the catch is, um, let me introduce this. So this is the recycle, recycle barn here. And a, a compact wheel loader articulates, right? So it's gonna drive in like this. And if he articulates to put something with forks with a pallet here, it's, it's, he can only get it so far. He's not gonna be able to drive, cause he's got it back out and the forks.
Right. I also don't know what height it is. He may be able to drive in.
Yeah, he, he could drive in, drop it anywhere in there, but then it, it, he's not gonna be able to drop it very far out into the main.
No, no, I get it. And, and that's what I'm, I don't, it, it may not be doable.
Right.
I, I get it. I just.
And the one he requested, um, and I assume he's, you know, looking at other manufacturers unfamiliar with the Bobcat when he requested. It's pretty big. I think it would be a, it, it could get into that building, but it couldn't articulate do much once it's in at all, really.
At the rest of the same, the debate further than it needs to right now. One, I think one of Josh's concerns also is um, using a piece of equipment while the transfer station is active with people driving around. So I think that's, I think that's part of why I was looking for something smaller as well. Um, so I have thirty-seven as amended to read. Shout out the town of Lebanon, vote to extend the capital reserve fund created on June eighth, twenty twenty-one for modification improvements to the transfer station to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to include the purchase of a compact track loader or similar piece of equipment. Any more comments? Select Board recommends?
Um, I'll throw it out there, because I, I may have mentioned, um, in the public session, I can't remember what all I've talked about, but, um, because I do work for Bobcat, I get a, an employee discount that can be passed on to other people and there's parameters and rules. And I thought that might be great, because I'm not gonna purchase a track loader anytime soon. That if I could get, use that for the town, and I did inquire about that and, um, municipalities, um, and like college, university school systems that typically send everything out to bid, um, aren't an entity that I could pass my discount on to. That being said, um, different manufacturers, and I know, oh, without going into any details, um, have programs for municipalities, business programs and other different things they do to try to capture the municipal business, um, that would, um, equal probably, or possibly even be a greater discount than my employee discount anyway. So, um, if, if this does go out to bid, or however goes out to bid on a new machine, then I can make sure that a local dealer, and I know who they are, they're very good at it anyway, but make sure they capitalize on all the available programs. But just to note that, um, personally, my employee discount won't apply.
So move on? Referendum thirty-eight, so the town Lebanon vote to increase the property tax levy limit of one million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars, established for the town Lebanon by the state law, commonly referred to as LD dash one. In the event that the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles and the following article thirty-nine will result in a property tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit.
So is it possible that excluding thirty-nine, that any of the preceding articles would exceed that limit?
No.
So do we need that phrase in there?
Yes.
Um, help me understand why.
Cause the levy limit is including all those plus or after. If it's only what's after. But the way, the reason it's separated is so that if it passes, or, or if thirty-nine passes, but this one fails, we don't have to go back and redo all of it and try and say, where are you gonna cut?
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that's why it was done this way, so that you don't have to do that.
Thank you.
Select Board recommends, yes? Five.
Paul, on thirty-nine, I have a, a, a correction.
True?
Uh, instead of where it says article thirty-eight, should that say referendum thirty-eight?
So I should do the same thing in thirty-eight as well?
Uh, yes.
I need to ask?
I'm just, they're kinda synonymous, but I'm just.
So on thirty-eight, you have articles twice, so you're gonna change both of those to referendums? Under the preceding articles, and that's gonna be preceding referendums? In the following referendum thirty-nine?
Yeah. Under the preceding referendum, then the following referendum thirty-nine.
Is our vote still valid on that? Need to vote again?
Well, if we rewrote ours, then we need to do the budget committee as well.
Oh. I just, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a type file. I don't think it's a big deal. I, I just, you know what I'm saying?
I think it's, it makes for better clarity.
It's just like, if you get to put a comment in somewhere, you have to do a re-vote, you know? I mean, it's just. The intent of the question is all the same. It's just. I just don't want somebody saying, hey, where's article? These are all referendums. Where's the article? But I just don't want them. Now, my only other thought is on thirty-nine, would we wanna bold that one, article thirty-eight? I don't know. I'm just asking. Just to make it stick out a little bit more.
We've been only bolding numbers and dollars.
I get it. I get it. I just, I just asked the question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hesitant to do that. Ooh, nice seeing sunshine. Wow. What, what did you say? Okay. Any other changes to thirty-nine? I'll read it again. Referendum thirty-nine, in the event that town Lebanon votes to approve referendum thirty-eight, to increase the town property tax levy limit, show the town vote to raise and appropriate an additional sum of two hundred and fifty thousand to place in the paving capital reserve fund for the purpose of road reconstruction and paving of town-owned public roads. Select Board recommends, yes? Five.
And then just for the people who go back and watch this video, um, later, that would, that would appropriate a total of two, uh, five hundred thousand dollars combined between this question and the previous road CIP question for paving. It's in two different questions, because this one we just read, number thirty-nine, would add would exceed the tax levy limit. Previous question would not.
So then next year, you could go to five hundred thousand without exceeding LD one. The board and the budget committee, you can ask that money to be used for something else. It's up to the voters to hold the board and the budget committee accountable, to keep it into, into paving and into roads. The town people talk about how much money, they wanna add money to the roads to get the roads repaired. You need to give them money to do that. So the budget committee doesn't wanna give them money for that, but this is your chance to do that. Um, and again, I would hold the board and the budget committee from robbing that account in future years to pay for other stuff, because that's one of the reasons why paving is so low already. So.
But this referendum question specifically states it goes into the paving capital reserve fund, but in future years.
There'll be room that you can put five hundred in there. Now, the board and the budget committee can just choose to not put five hundred in there. Use that money and put it someplace else, cause they have that option, but it's up to the voters to hold those two boards accountable, if they wanna keep that money there for roads. So.
And to my point earlier, prior to, um, referendum thirty-eight and thirty-nine, it is, uh, highly unlikely that any of those questions or budgets will affect our mill rate, would make anybody's taxes go.
Town's portion.
The town's portion, right? The school and the county in control. But this would have an impact on the mill rate. And do, didn't we talk about like a rough?
It, it may, I mean, it's, it's, it's very, very tough to say it won't have an impact on the mill rate, because we do not separate mill rates out between school and town. We never have. So people will just see the mill rate and whether their taxes go up or down. And while a lot of times it's gonna be because of the school, we don't, we can't guarantee, we can't tell you how much which. So I'm reticent to say that your mill rate won't go up if you do it, because
Well, yeah.
Because that's what people hear, and then they get their bill and it goes up because of the school. Right? So.
Try to be very clear, it's the town's portion.
So.
Yeah, and, and what I'm saying is, i- if voters approve thirty-nine for two hundred and fifty thousand.
May or may not cause the mill rate to go up. It, it perhaps would go up a little bit because of this. Um, you don't know how much is compensated by extra income. Right? So you have other properties, you have, the town may receive extra income that could offset this, but so we don't know. So that's why it's sometimes hard to tell. Um, but yes, there's, the override is probably means that that would impact your, your mill rate a little bit.
Right. All things being equal, the two hundred and fifty thousand spread over the entire town, it was just.
Pretty, it's pretty minimal.
And, and to your point that people don't see how that mill rate is broken down between the different entities, that's something that we can do in the annual town report. Right? We can actually lay out the total mill rate and each entity's portion of it, so people can see it there.
Well, if they don't have tax bills or, where do I see it that?
Tell you what percentage of the school.
Percentage of your taxes go to the school. So that's the percentage of the mill rate essentially.
Yeah.
Uh, which is like sixty-some percent goes to the school and.
I feel like it's higher than that.
Yeah, I think it's in the high seventies and low eights. Something to be aware of also, everybody, LD one may be going away.
Yeah, it's in committee.
No.
Thought it was in committee.
Nope. It is on the governor's desk.
Oh, is it? We made it that far?
Wow.
So it passed, it passed, uh, passed the house in the senate.
Oh. When it, that was pretty.
Not by much, but it did pass the house in the senate. So it's on Mills's desk. I have no idea if she's gonna sign.
She doesn't sign it, maybe she'll let it ride.
Or lets it ride. And I don't know, I can't find anywhere yet. I wanna reach out to legal, but obviously power outage, internet outage. Um, I don't know when indeed it takes effect. So it may go away, in which case this question is moot.
Yeah, what happens if it goes away before June?
I don't, well, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if it, if they, cause repealing the law, so if it's repealed, if that's enacted, is that happening immediately? In which case this. In which case this is a moot point, right? I, I don't, I don't know. I honestly don't know. So.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just to, just to throw another, just to throw a monkey wrench into, into the works, right? I, I just. We're always hitting our heads, right? I mean, and we've had it, voters approve of stuff, but yet, but yeah. I, I don't know. I, in a way, I liked LD one, because it controlled, it controlled tax increases. But the town was artificially set low, and so it always, it was a really, really big hindrance for us. Um, but if it's off, then does the board, do people realize the impact on their taxes? And I think that's probably more it might be better for the town to somehow find a way to show people their, the impact of their vote on, on the taxes, so that they understand. And now, if you do that going forward, if you don't have an LD one, and they realize, hey, I wanna vote for this, but this is what my impact's gonna be.
Right. I think it's important to communicate that. And, and there may be towns that if LD one goes away, just go run away and go, fine, we can skin. But voters need to understand that they're the ones that still vote yes or no, or whatever.
It's good to have that target or that goal when you're budgeting, but the town could, if LD one went away, the town could still implement some kind of expenditure control. Maybe, you know, you could cap it at inflation or something like that. That's a, that's.
Well, what happens is, is that it's happened in the past before LD one is, they do something. People get their tax bills, mill rate ju- jumped up, and guess what? Next election round, those selectmen were all gone and somebody else, but it didn't change, right? And that's, that was their, that was their way to react, cause they didn't know ahead of time when they voted, that was gonna impact their taxes by that much. So.
I, I, I think it's always important to be as, as clear as we can, which is sometimes not all that clear, because there's gonna be variables as to what the total referendum package, as recommended by the select board or whatever, affects the mill rate and people's taxes. People wanna know, are my taxes going up if I vote for this? And I think we're trying to be as clear as we can that the only part of this whole package that could raise taxes at all is question thirty-nine. And that, if thirty-eight and thirty-nine pass, and that's miniscule amount. What we don't know could affect the mill rate. And I know we've said this, but I'm just reiterating it for clarity. Um, is the vast portion of the mill rate is our school budget and the county tax, which we have no control over. Um, that's.
County tax is pretty small.
Yeah, actually. But those, those, at least those two factors, we don't have control over. So if the mill rate does go up measurably, significantly, or however you wanna define it, it's not because of this or anything that is on this referendum, other than the school.
Paul, I just wanted to remind you that the date is still in the.
It's automatic on mine, but Lynn has to put it on this into the, uh, actual ballot format, so that date will just disappear. Yep. It's just. But yeah.
I, I will say, um, I'm new to the board. Obviously, this year is my first budget cycle in putting on this, but it's has been and is very encouraging to me to work on this with this board and to have unanimous, um, votes on all of the questions. Just grateful that there's unanimity on the budget, even though there's been, you know, some back and forth in discussion, but always has to happen, getting these things out. It's encouraging to me, um, to have unanimity, uh, on the board related to the budget.
I just mean that because I think I'd get.
I usually slow down, but that's why I took that sip of coffee before.
Any other comments before we move on? Uh, that was the agenda. No public participation. Individual settlement issues. We'll start with Mr. Hollow. Hollow, speechless.
Still powering me back.
Yeah, put that in the minutes. I think anybody would believe it.
I just want, we are, tomorrow is the Easter egg hunt at the Hanson School. It is still on, which it's gonna be, eh, yeah, bring some boots. You got little kids.
Hide the eggs like a, like a forty.
I, I, it's gonna be interesting, but if there, if there are people out there that don't have power, if there is power at the school, there will be food available, snacks, um, there's face painting, there's games. They, Roberta, who's done this for years, has really put a lot into this. And so we hope that people will still come out, plow over there. And I'm in contact with the school. They're supposed to open it up tomorrow. And I'll be there at nine, but it's from eleven to two. So.
Not to deflate anything, but nobody will see this video until next week, probably.
That's true.
You never know.
Never know.
It's sitting in there.
If it ends and it comes on, let me know and I'll come upload the video.
Yeah, because I know. A lot of us are still out of power, most of this table.
They should close by. I hope you enjoyed Easter egg.
Still on.
Good. In hopes that this might be viewed before what I'm about to say is too late. It's still not too late to, um, take out papers and, uh, get involved, uh, in running for a Select Board seat or a Budget Committee seat. Papers should do, I think, the fifteenth, right? And so you can still get papers. Um, hopefully, the town hall will be open Monday. Everything will be great. And you can get papers and then you have a week to, um, get the signatures needed and go. So I still encourage, I, I don't even know who's running for everything other than just people here at the table, but, um, I would encourage people, if you want to see changes, you want to get involved, you want to have an impact on our town, that's the way to do it.
Are we closing Petrie's Day?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we are.
Is that?
It got put out as the fifteenth, but I think it's gonna be the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we are closing.
Okay, so papers due the sixteenth.
I, I don't want to officially say that because that's not.
That is the day. It is the sixteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Papers due the sixteenth. Speaking of Monday, the, if, um, I guess Paul, if the, if the office ends up having limited, being able to do limited work on Monday, uh, Lynn can just let me know and I'll try to get it out on Facebook. So hopefully people know. I can, I can text Lynn, too. But I guess there is that risk, right? If the N N S not back, we'll be able to do limited business.
We're bringing a laptop to someplace that has wifi and uploaded tablet.
Yeah.
Makes me think of, um, having an alternate hotspot unit or something could be used in case of, uh.
Well, this, the cell signal's been so spotty, too. Something's going on with that. I don't know if that, uh, DMNA business, they do. I don't know if they would have the bandwidth to do that anyway.
I don't know if I put it out in the email or if you saw it in the MMA book, that the opera funds have to be obligated. Obligated means it has to be in a contract purchase order or an award letter. So there is a danger of November. How this is handled. Just having it designated is not going to make it.
And it's by December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's the first time I, well, I guess they, they brought it out anyways. The, uh, the definition of obligation, because it wasn't, wasn't expressed before.
And what is the definition? What was it saying? It says?
In most cases, obligation, opera funds requires more than a mere budget appropriation. Instead, a binding obligation such as a contract, purchase order, or award letter is needed.
Well, if you do a new station, so on November, if you do a new station, you can probably sign that contract. That award is gonna do is you probably, you probably could do that. Pretty quickly.
If it doesn't pass, then.
Then, then if you look into, if it doesn't pass in November, then you use at least towards an ambulance. And then you could do whatever the ambulance manufacturer is or whatever. You could maybe do a contract or whatever.
Don't have time to have a vote to do that.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to do the seven-day. After the November election, you'd have to do a seven-day election. To go ahead and vote, so basically.
An open carry.
Open downbeat and basically appropriate that money to get you, to give you permission to do whatever. Whether it be an ambulance or whatever, I mean, maybe it's down payment on a truck or something. I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm just, you know what I'm saying? But it gives you.
We're just trying to say, we better have a backup plan.
Right, whatever that, whatever that appropriation is gonna be, you know, you gotta have a date. And then you have it pretty quick because you don't, once you get into Christmas, it's gonna be hard to get anybody to show up.
We can, we could invoke that the Thursday after the November election. We have it all ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, have a plan for, you know, have your, your price bids, whatever, already in.
Use those money floors and, and get some quotes or whatever, or have that lined up.
Yeah, as a, as a.
As a backup so you don't have to go scrambling last, last second.
Yeah. You're right into the holidays.
Yeah.
One of the letters that was sent out for lot number R eleven thirteen C for fines, the owner will be in this coming Thursday, looking to discuss that with us. And the opposite, the other letter, we followed up on them the following week. But the first one's already scheduled. There, everybody have internet long enough to see the change to the draft letter for the town report. Minor tweaks, major tweaks, minor, anything will work.
So the location study was done in the current fiscal year, so I don't really want to include that or not. That was done in October, this past year. And this is for the year that ended, ended in June. So I, I just, I don't, I don't.
Building new station, was that in last year's?
I mean, the, we, we tried it. We tried to get the, that's where we did all the Aqua money in the June, on the June bill, the five hundred thousand. So I mean, we were doing that. I mean, so I think there was some discussion there, so I think part of that's okay to leave there. I mean, the failure happened in June, right at the end of, you know, right after the vote. So that happened in June. So. So, and I, and the only thing I, I, you said after an engineering study, the building was determined to be unsafe for personnel to work out. Okay, where that goes, with, with station one and station two no longer suitable. And then instead of saying for having per, working out of them, I said no longer suitable for housing, comma, the Select Board, working with the department, found temporary housing for the personnel. I think that was, is this simpler and clearer? And I can, I can, I can give you this.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the only question is, and the Select Board were working with the department, arranged to have a location study for a possible building. I don't know if we just want to delete that line.
When did we start talking? Well, so that says arranged. It doesn't say that the study was concluded. So when did we start talking about the location study?
We started about July or August.
Yeah, but it would have been after.
So it was still, it was still after June thirtieth. When did we s- put out designs?
And the only, the only other possibility that you can do is instead of that, how that's worded, to say that a, a location study was contracted uh, to be completed, um, and it's leaving, and it's leaving it that way. Or a location study for a new station was, was contracted to be completed or something like that. If you want to put down a location study, or you just delete the whole thing. I don't.
Well, we started looking at building a new station before the location study.
Yes, but, but we didn't do a location study until, until afterwards.
I'm fine with either way. Just let me on.
I think you, I just could take that, that.
Okay, just cross right out.
At least that's my, my flag. I'll let you have this. So what I did is I sued for housing personnel.
Yep.
And then the Select were working, so. And I just, the, just all the way, all the way near that whole line.
Yep, yep. Hurts. It's fine. Anybody else got any comment? Your signature goes on it, so.
I'm, I'm curious on the inventory side, but on the status of Comcast, Comcast, build out a percentage of the town. Waiting for them to get to my.
Yeah, I don't know. They've been busy laying, laying fiber rock. Um, they haven't. I, I see it, I see it looped everywhere.
Yeah, there's a lot of that going on.
I don't quite understand what they're doing, whether it's probably measuring it out and just kind of looping it or what. I don't know. I mean, I think I have it before the end of the summer, but, but yeah, I mean.
Yeah, just to answer your question, and this is based off my experience fiber at the shipyard. One crew is going through and they're stringing it all up and a second crew will come through and make their connections. Because it's a different, different skill set. There's a lot of testing involved when they make those connections.
Yes. Well, you said probably measuring it out and, and going to here and then loop it all up and then.
They'll leave a lot of excess where they made the connections.
All I know right now is I got two lines off the telephone pole that belongs to them. They, they looped it all and lays on the ground. Now mine's kind of going right to where they used to be attached to my house.
Oh, that's the one that came down.
Yeah.
Speaking of attached to the house, um, I'll throw something that I heard for the town, um, because I didn't know this, and it, it benefited us to a degree. Well, just on my experience so that, um, anybody else in a similar situation can, can have it. We had a, a tree that was leaning over, um, just in the past year. It had shifted to significantly lean over the wires going from the pole to our house. Uh, and we were concerned that it was gonna fall. And so I called CMP and let them know, and they sent a person out to look at it. And their stance is it's easier for them to deal with the tree falling and ripping the wires off of the house than it is to proactively go in and cut a tree down. He, he basically said, it's your tree. You know, you can deal with it if you want. Um, we would come in after the fact. I don't get all that. I'm sure there's financial aspects, whatever. That's their decision, their policy, fine. But they will come in and disconnect the wire from the house. Actually, they disconnected it at the pole, and this is what we did, at no charge. They disconnected from the pole, corled it up by, under our meter or underwear it attaches to the house. Then we took the tree down. Um, we took two trees down that, that were in danger and they came and put the wire back up in the course of three or four hours. And it was just worked really smooth. There was no charge to us whatsoever. Um, so if anybody's in a similar situation, you know, once all of this mess is cleared up and the guys are back at it, you know, feel free to, to do that. I think it's a good idea. And, and I will say in hindsight, take down more trees than you think you need because we didn't and one fell over and crushed my daughter's hand. So, um, it, it, it never hurts to take that extra tree down. It could be a danger.
In my case, I took the tree down last year and that was probably was what's holding the cable wire up. I learned a lesson.
But I, I do think it's, it's nice that CMP will do that free of charge, whether you cut your own tree down or have an arborist come in, whatever.
Okay. Any change to unfinished business?
There are code for blocking blocks, cinder blocks and doors.
Yeah, there is. I will have it sent over for this week. It did just come in. There is some, there's some concern that even if he removes that door where they had cut into, that there is concern that even if he blocks it up, that there, there still might be water issues because of it. So there is a concern there. So I don't know. That's his concern. He was like, I hate to do it and then you still water somehow, but but I'll send over what there is.
Thank you. You can cross out ballot questions, I guess. Cross out ballot questions, I guess. Oh, is that for next year? We were gonna.
That was next year.
We were gonna actually keep a list of the potential questions, right?
Right.
I'll have to add that in.
Well, it's true.
Oh, I see. I was looking, um, go two lines up and it says ballot questions as well.
Yeah.
That's the one.
You're right.
Now I understand.
I did see that.
Anything from the state on the bridge, new bridge?
No. No, I was expecting anything for a while, because New Hampshire is still asking questions in Milton, so.
On the, the Upper Guinea Bridge Repair. Do you want to add Conservation Commission? Or maybe a separate line right under that one? I'll have to, I, I'll have to follow up with Mr. Bozak, but they were, I believe they were taking the lead on that grant. Cannot. What's the name of that grant?
Stream crossing.
Stream crossing grant? Because that would go hand in hand with that bridge, I believe.
Did you see the latest bridge report that came out, right?
And we might want to reach out to either DOT or like Laura Palmer, who is an engineering firm, to find out how do we go about getting that bridge done. I don't know. But let's, because you have bridge money that can use, in the CMP that can be used towards.
Yeah.
That's the bridge report there, on that particular bridge even.
It looks worse from the water than from the top.
But actually, it wasn't as bad right up as I thought it was going to. It, it still needs work. But they, they were mostly in there, they're talking about maintenance more than replacement, so.
And, and if that's, maybe bringing in their, and they say you can do that, then that's, that's great, but, but we need to schedule it, right?
Right, right.
This is in our emails?
Yes, it was, actually.
Okay.
Did you see?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I put the email in the front of that? Date that came out.
Okay.
What was it on?
What's that?
What was it on?
Well, this is the one from Linda Paul. April first. With Paul, you said you forwarded it.
First night forward, huh?
Yes.
The. It's the Powder Mill Bridge. So that's the, that's the first one you come to before you get to the Griss Mill.
Correct. Which is one you don't really realize is a bridge.
Yeah.
Actually, that's a lake right now. We went down through it recently, but it's really flooded in that area. Any other changes to the unfinished business? Any words on the safety zones?
No, she's been in community college the last couple of weeks after. There's a marijuana questions as well and stuff, sort of that.
Well, we're all here, we can do the minutes. I'm missing one, three of them, I'm looking, I don't see it. Okay. Before.
It's the one that I left early. So I'll pass it on. We're like, top round discussion, I remember that.
We can motion to approve the Thursday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, self running minutes.
All favor?
Understand?
Understand, yeah.
So is top round rescheduled to come back or?
I haven't heard anyone coming. Request for time off. Report. No, no, I'm sorry. And request for training. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. This is the Maine Municipal Treasurers Conference. This is where a treasurer will be recognized for completing her certification. I know, no power, your clock stood still.
Now my watch battery died at this charge, like, once a week.
Is there a battery backup in that thing? Yeah, I guess so, because I didn't change it.
Well, you had generator power.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I forgot about that. Boy, heaven knows what things are gonna work out later. That's it for me. Everybody have anything else? We're gonna have these on Saturday, Monday, instead of Thursday nights, we do much better timing.
I'm not as tired.
They're gonna say, your brain's wide awake. Motion to adjourn. All favor?